Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you please stand for invocation and pledge.
Let's pray. Our dear gracious heavenly father, what an awesome day this is that we are able to come into your presence with our requests and our petitions on this national day of prayer. It is not lost on us that we do recognize this today in our country, that we can, that we come as a nation with humble hearts and bended knee and approach your throne and ask that you would continue to watch over our nation, that you would be with our elected officials, that we know that the heart of the king is in the hand of the lord, and we ask continually that you would watch over those who are elected, that are governing our country, and we ask for their protection. We ask that you would give them wisdom. Tonight, we ask that you would give us, the city council and mayor, wisdom even in our decisions here on a local level. We also ask for our public safety officers, our firemen, our police, those who are in the line of duty, that our firefighters, that you would put a hedge of protection around them and protect them. Our police officers that are out on the streets, that you would protect them and watch over them even tonight. We think of our military who are serving abroad and those who are serving here, the border patrol officers, we ask that you would watch over them. So on this day of, now we recognize the national day of prayer, may it not be just today, but may we have the freedom and feel the freedom to come into your presence at any time, knowing that you're a gracious heavenly father who hears our petitions as a father hears a child. And so we don't come in flippantly. We come in, even tonight, asking for wisdom. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Show me the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olberle roll, please.
Carrie Hogg, Ward 1.
Here.
Jase Stepford, Ward 2.
Here.
Carrie Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Tommy Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Catherine, Ward 6.
President.
The gang is all here. How about that? First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from April the 18th. Council, y'all have had an opportunity to look this over well in advance of this evening and had a chance to make any additions or edits if there are any. Now would be the time to make them. If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We start by recognizing some of the finest here in our community. Is there anybody else here from the school system that wants to present these teachers? Do I get to do it myself? One of the fun things I get to do as mayor is attend the annual Teacher of the Year banquet. And obviously, everybody knows we've got four different schools in our system, and each year they recognize one of the outstanding teachers from each of those, and then they get together and they arm wrestle and they come up with Teacher of the Year. Maybe it doesn't go quite like that, but it's always a great opportunity to recognize people that have, that are working to make our community a better place, and tonight we get a chance to recognize four such educators. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read a resolution that is on everybody's, and then I'll present them individually. If you've got kids or family members that want to come down, you get to get your picture taken with me. Isn't that a great thrill? But they all read like this. From, in this case, this is from the primary school, we have Tara Peters. From the elementary school, Christine McKinney. From the middle school, Chris McSwain. And from the high school, Debbie Justice. And they all read as whereas this teacher's been named Teacher of the Year at their school, their personal dedication and sincere concern for quality education has made them an asset to the school system, whereas their leadership has provided a vital service for children of Cartersville, and whereas it is the desire of the city of Cartersville to honor this most valuable teacher, and therefore it being resolved by mayor and city council that this, because of their dedication and excellent performance of service, that this means be taken to honor their being selected Teacher of the Year for the year 2020 for their prospective school. And because this one is in my hand, Ms. Tara Peters, if you come on down and get your. (applause) It's called the brick and grift.
(laughing).
Chris McSwain with Cartersville, Bill. (applause) Young and a good judge of character, too, though. Carter'sville High School, Christine McKinney. Cartersville High School, Debbie Justice. Outstanding. But wait, there's more. Somebody was a little bit sneaky and put another proclamation here. I'm gonna have to walk back because this person doesn't know the game unless they look at the agenda. Mr. Duncan McKenzie, who won absolutely no recognition. I'm just getting some recognition. This is a proclamation that was put together by the folks at the school system that says where Mr. Duncan McKenzie is speaking and dutifully served Cartersville City Schools continuously since July of 2009, whereas he has worked in education for 46 years, including 31 years as a school administrator, has provided inspiring and visionary leadership for the Cartersville school system and his purpose and mission throughout his entire tenure here. His genuine desire is always to do what is ethical and what is best for each student and their families, whereas he has worked tirelessly and passionately with parents and fellow educators to promote their education and general welfare of his boys and girls. Now therefore, I am Attorney General Sanzini, Mayor of City of Cartersville, with perpetual honor and admiration, being henceforth proclaimed, I wrote that, that the city of Cartersville deserves the deepest appreciation for Mr. Ken McKenzie for his service and dedication and leadership. (applause)
It's been my pleasure being in Cartersville City Schools since the month of old. It's a wonderful place to live, and I thank you for the comfort I have in this city. Thank you.
Now, teachers, as part of your reward, would do something you never do, and I'm gonna let you leave class early. You're all certainly welcome to stay and watch, but if you have other places to be, we certainly understand that. We'll see you, I think, next week at the Teacher of the Year banquet? Is that where that is? Great. Dismissed. We'll give you a minute to get on out. All right, Mr. Manino, why don't you get us started on SU 19-02?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you know, this is a special use permit application. This is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This request was at 128 Leek Street. The proposal is to add a detached garage with a second floor accessory apartment on this property. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, sir. At this point, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU 19-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 19-02. Turn it over to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. You cannot leave early. Randy, you've got the next item.
Thank you again, mayor and council. This is a two-fold request. The property at 44 Weaver Street has been dilapidated and run down. Code enforcement has been trying to get the property cleaned up. With that, we do have a consent order from Judge White to remove the structure from the property with the consent of mayor and council. And the second part of the request would be to allow us the expenditure, because it does go over $5,000. We need to bring that expenditure to council to have it removed. We did have three proposals come in, and Crane Grading came in with a low bid of $5,200. And with that, we recommend your approval of these items.
Okay. Thank you. And so this is for the demolition costs and also for the authorization to do the demolition, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And that could be rolled into one motion if council so desires. So are there any questions, comments, and if not, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Mr. Sanders, you're up.
Thank you, mayor. This is the first reading of a revision to the solid waste ordinance. This revision cleans up some language to reflect our current practices, and there also is an increase of $1.50 on the base residential charge. And it also reflects the current commercial rates. It replaces the old schedule, and those rates have already been implemented.
I'm sorry I didn't ask this during the work session. The $1.50 increase, does that make up, does that totally cover the increases that we incurred from the county for our tipping fees?
That's a, I like numbers. There's a lot of numbers on the screen over there. I'm not exactly sure. Let's see. The, so the cost for the landfill now is about $40,000 a month, but about half of that is commercial and half is residential. It's sort of a coincidence that it's split. Well, the tonnage we haul is about the same, so. And you can see, the last time we had a rate increase, it was about $28,000 a month. So the total, the increase just for residential was 72,000 landfill costs. So in the revenue, the proposed revenue increase is 130. So yes, the answer to your question would be yes. It covers that. It also covers other costs that have risen since the last time we had a rate increase, which are primarily the equipment maintenance costs and personnel. As you can see, our customer bases went up considerably, and our personnel, we're doing it with less personnel, so we're doing more with less. We found some, you know, efficiencies. But because of the cost of the insurance and things like that have escalated for personnel costs, even though we have less personnel, the personnel costs have gone up significantly, too.
And I also know that we've had a discussion about recycling and costs, and I know that the consumables market has kind of dried up, and so this is kind of helping to offset some of the losses that we're seeing as part of running our recycling program.
That's correct. The recycling program does cost us about, you know, we raised rates in 2012 for $2 to cover the recycling. So with the amount of customers we have, that's about 14,000 a month. And between the cost of the personnel, the equipment, the carts, the cart maintenance, we're close to that $14,000 a month is about what it costs us to run that program to pick up 30 tons, which, so, and our tipping fee's about $30 a ton. So basically, we're spending about 14,000 to save 900 going into the landfill. But, you know, there was an increase to cover that, so.
Thank you. Sorry to get off on that side, but that's good news.
And one small question. So the deletion of yard waste pay pile rate schedule, is that, is that what I think it is? Like where people put an extremely large amount out there? So is there a new schedule now, or?
No. What we found, just looking, we basically have not been charging for pay piles for the last couple of years. And the reason is, it was costing us more, we were collecting about $4,000 in revenue, but it was costing us significantly more to get that $4,000 because we would have, somebody would have to go out and assess the pile, put a price on it, flag it, leave a door hanger. That person within either have to come to our office or customer service and pay the amount. Then a work order would have to go out for us to send the claw truck out to pick up, and there was a lot of work being generated for $4,000 a year. So we, we just stopped. And also, it was one of the biggest areas of complaints we would get, because people didn't like having to pay 60 extra bucks or whatever it was. A lot of times, they would argue about, you get five cubic yards for free, and they would argue that, well, this, you know, we would get in arguments about what five cubic yards is. So by just picking up whatever you put out, basically, within reason, it's made the customers happier.
I teed that one up for you. I'm glad you finally knocked it out.
Thank you. Took me a while to get there. Sorry.
All right. Well, thank you, Tommy. After, are there any questions for Mr. Sanders relative to this solid waste ordinance revision?
Thank you.
Good information. Thank you. This is the first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting. Taste of Cartersville Festival.
Yes, mayor and council. The Bartow County Rotary Club has requested that the city waive the fees for the employee IDs that are required for individual pouring license for their Taste of Cartersville event on Saturday, May 4. This resolution will allow for us to waive that fee and also issue the ID badges to the volunteers as well, and your approval is recommended.
They still will go through the same screening process?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, while you're making your way up, I'm gonna ask council to add two items to the agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion to add those two items.
Carrie already did.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items are added, and you just add your item on to when you're done with these first three, but we'll take them in order. First, the electric meter testing invoice, please, sir.
Yes. Thank you, mayor and council. This is a invoice from M&amp;R Services. They are a contractor that tests our meters, well, a selection of our meters annually for accuracy and make sure everything's wired up correctly and they're reading correctly, make sure we're not over or under billing our customers. The amount of the invoice is $7,884. It was a budgeted amount, actually cheaper than what we had budgeted, and we got about three extra meters out of it. So it worked out pretty good, and the electric department does ask that you approve the payment of the invoice.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yeah, next item. Primary cable, underground primary cable for the new courtyard Marriott Hotel. We do have to purchase wire to complete our loop up there. This is a sole source item. It's only available to utilities through Stewart Erby Company. The quoted price for the cabling was $23,800, and based on the fact that sometime the footages on the reels exceed a standard reel, and they may have it sitting on the yard already, we could get it faster. We might buy a reel that's got 20 or 30 extra feet on it. So we were asking for an amount not to exceed of $25,000 to purchase the cable. And it says a budgeted item.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Hampton? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Derek, while you're making your way up, I'm gonna ask council to add two items to the agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion to add those two items.
Carrie already did.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items are added, and you just add your item on to when you're done with these first three, but we'll take them in order. First, the electric meter testing invoice, please, sir.
Yes. Thank you, mayor and council. This is a invoice from M&amp;R Services. They are a contractor that tests our meters, well, a selection of our meters annually for accuracy and make sure everything's wired up correctly and they're reading correctly, make sure we're not over or under billing our customers. The amount of the invoice is $7,884. It was a budgeted amount, actually cheaper than what we had budgeted, and we got about three extra meters out of it. So it worked out pretty good, and the electric department does ask that you approve the payment of the invoice.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gillen, come on forward.
Good evening, mayor and council. I come to you with the sole source purchase of an 83-inch by 24-foot tilt-and-go tandem axle tilt deck trailer. It is from Bartow Trailer Sales, Inc., in the amount of $7,000, and it is a budgeted item.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, while you're making your way up, I'm gonna ask council to add two items to the agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion to add those two items.
Carrie already did.
I'll second his motion.
Thank you. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items are added, and you just add your item on to when you're done with these first three, but we'll take them in order. First, the electric meter testing invoice, please, sir.
Yes. Thank you, mayor and council. This is a invoice from M&amp;R Services. They are a contractor that tests our meters, well, a selection of our meters annually for accuracy and make sure everything's wired up correctly and they're reading correctly, make sure we're not over or under billing our customers. The amount of the invoice is $7,884. It was a budgeted amount, actually cheaper than what we had budgeted, and we got about three extra meters out of it. So it worked out pretty good, and the electric department does ask that you approve the payment of the invoice.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Yeah, next item. Primary cable, underground primary cable for the new courtyard Marriott Hotel. We do have to purchase wire to complete our loop up there. This is a sole source item. It's only available to utilities through Stewart Erby Company. The quoted price for the cabling was $23,800, and based on the fact that sometime the footages on the reels exceed a standard reel, and they may have it sitting on the yard already, we could get it faster. We might buy a reel that's got 20 or 30 extra feet on it. So we were asking for an amount not to exceed of $25,000 to purchase the cable. And it says a budgeted item.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Hampton? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Phaser Ranger.
Yes. The phaser is not a superhero. The Phase Ranger is a device that we use to identify which phase our primary conductors are on. It's a very important device that we've had to do without since the beginning of our system, so we're really looking forward to getting one to be able to accurately determine, you know, if we hook up something and we think we're on the right phase, we can verify that now and make sure we don't cause outages and damage to equipment. We did get three prices on this. The lowest price came back from Morgan Advanced Products, and we recommend this purchase in the amount of $9,799.93, and this also was a budgeted item.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion on this item. If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Call in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And then the item that we just added to the agenda relative to some boring services.
Yes, and thank you for being patient with me on that one. We, I don't have a clock up there, but the, this item is the actual cable to go into the conduit that we'll have the boring contractor install. It will complete our loop up there and provide an additional level of reliability for the conference center as well as the hotel once it's all done. We will have to bore across the parking lot in order to complete the loop, so this wire will go in that conduit. The quoted amount, I'm sorry, the boring cost for that, well, I'm talking two different things. The boring cost for that, we're estimating to be around $23,000, $24,000 based on exact footage. In case we hit rock or something, we've asked for an amount not to exceed of $27,500 for southeastern, southeastern gas service to do that for us. And they are a services contractor for us. We have a standing contract with them to do our boring for us.
Okay. Any questions for Derek on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. All in favor of that.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, guys.
And Mr. Jones, you're next.
Good evening, everyone. As we discussed in the work session, we have a half-million-gallon washwater tank at the water treatment plant. The tank's sole purpose is to hold potable water, which is used to backwash filters on a roughly 200-hour cycle. There's nine filters. They all get washed, depending on water quality, at around 200 hours. This is the only means for washing filters. So if we were to lose this for some reason, every 200 hours, at some staggered point, we lose a 3-million-gallon-a-day-capacity filter. It's bad times if this thing were to fail on us. We had it inspected. It's a pre-con. They're a company that builds these tanks. They went inside the tank, inspected it, also went outside on top. And structurally, the tank has several problems on the inside. The roof is delaminating and dropping to the bottom of the tank. It's exposed rebar. The rebar has corroded, all of which puts the dome of the tank in jeopardy. There's also stress cracks around the bottom footing of the tank that's showing that there are, there are signs there. When this tank was built, we have the drawings from the '70s, it had an engineered lifetime of about 50 years. So we're, we're deep into that. Given the consequence of failure of the tank, we would like to move this project up. It is not currently funded in the current budget, but what we're gonna do is take some money from a project that because of its start time in the budget, we won't expend the total amount, and we're just gonna move it to this project so we can accelerate engineering. We asked for a proposal from Weideman and Singleton Engineers. They've done all of our plant work there and have been very, very successful with them for a proposal, and they proposed a cost of $69,930. And this will, the total is comprised of three components. The design phase is $25,020. The bid management phase is $5,760. And then their work during construction, where they will ensure that we get what we pay for, is the larger portion at $39,150. We believe that these are all reasonable costs and would recommend them for your approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Bob on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Ms. Reed, you've got the next two.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first item up is a lease agreement with the DDA. This is to update and execute existing lease for the DDA to occupy the Train Depot building. And it's been reviewed by our board and the city attorney, and we do recommend approval of that lease agreement.
Okay. Thank you. And legally, that's all in line with your?
Yeah, I noticed the ones attached to the end have blind dates, but that's because it needs to be filled in when it's executed. But the lease runs from 2019 until 2030.
Correct.
And you just need to fill in whenever you sign it, put the same date in those two blinds.
All right. We can do that. The next item is a proposal.
Can we approve the first one?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm just so excited, you guys.
I love your energy. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. So this next item, I'm actually very excited about, as you can tell, it is a proposal for a sublease to rent, from the Etowah Bush School, to rent a room in the Train Depot for the next year on a contractual basis to host their entities. This is Sean and Alexis Callahan, and they have worked with us on different projects in downtown regarding African-American history and different projects throughout the city of Cartersville and the county as well. So this is something that they came to us with the proposals included in your agenda, and if you have any questions, they're here to answer them probably better than I could. But the requirement in our lease is that we have written approval from our DDA board as well as city council before we can sublease. My board has reviewed this and does recommend approval, and so it is in front of you guys now.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? And if not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Brock, you have the next item?
Yes, mayor and council. The members of Shelter Beer Company, LLC, are here to do, present to you all a proposal that they submitted to a committee of city council members as well as staff on a RFP that was released for the 19 North Irwin Street property. And at this time, if those individuals would like to come up for their presentation.
Sure. And if you would, we'll need your name and your address for our clerk. And just as a note, I do know that there's, there might be some other people at the end of the presentation that would like to make comment to council, and everybody will have an opportunity to do so that cares to. But gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Would any council members like the condensed version of the RFP?
If you'll make sure whatever you give to us, you give to the clerk right there, please.
Well, to get things started, I'd like to first say thank you to council for having us here tonight. My name is Ian Kennedy, and I am currently a structural engineer for a small firm in Marietta. This is Brian Ellis, who's a marketing executive at a company in Kennesaw. And then Michael Holder, who is a licensed general contractor that works throughout the northwest corridor. Three of us would like to open Irwin and Church Brewing Company in your old fire station. Also with us today is our real estate broker and consultant, Alex Brennan with East Mountain Development Group. We've had, we've had dreams of starting a business similar to this well before the three of us owners even got together. Brian, while living and working in Costa Rica, wanted to open a beachside brewery in Tamarindo. Michael has been home brewing since 2012 and has been looking for a way to get back into running his own business again. I've been home brewing since 2012 as well. My wife and I had a pipe dream of opening a wedding venue where I would brew the beer for the events. We all met in 2015 and threw for the events. We all met in 2015, and through becoming friends, we found that our passions and business hopes were aligned. Then in 2017, we formed our business entity. Brian will be our CEO, Michael our COO, and I will be the director of brewing operations. After a year of business planning, we got lawyers involved, and they got us in touch with Alex, and we started searching for a location. It was challenging. We looked at quite a few places, but were having trouble finding a place that matched our project vision and still function within our business plan. Michael then had the idea of widening our search area a bit to include Cartersville. Alex reached out to Lily at the DDA, who responded with really positive feedback about having a brewery downtown. Michael was already familiar with the area, but once Ryan and I saw the downtown and how active the community was, we knew our business could thrive here. The old fire station to us had potential just from seeing the outside and knowing the square footage available in the building and the adjacent fire bay. We eventually got inside and then knew the place could function for our use, even if it was going to take a lot of work. The main fire bay is three thousand-plus square feet with thirty-foot ceilings on one side, which is perfect for our planned fifteen-barrel brew house and fermenters. The historic fire bay and hayloft is a great space for the taproom, and the remainder of the building floors will act as taproom overflow and event space. We, we absolutely love this building. In fact, we're planning on naming two of our beers after the historic structure. Our Station One Pale Ale, which will pay homage to the name of the firehouse. It's a fairly traditional dry-hopped pale ale that we brew with a yeast that helps bring out more of the hop flavor and aroma. We also have our Nineteen North Lager, which is a classic German Hellus. It's clean, refreshing, and lower in alcohol. We also plan to brew a variety of other styles, including stouts, IPAs, and cider. We believe that Irwin and Church and downtown Cartersville will be mutually beneficial to each other for a long time. We can be an asset to the community, and in return, this community will allow our dream business to succeed. Now, Brian is going to come up and talk a little bit more about the business and that relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us today. Our project vision is to embrace the building's history and create a landmark destination in downtown Cartersville. Our plan is to rehab the building's exterior, bringing back to its former glory, opening the inside of the building and bringing back the grandeur to the building's grand halls. The interior will feature a taproom in the building's original fire bay. It's actually where the horse carriages used to be. This will have a walkout deck that will overlook the production brewery. It will also feature a lead-through to the outdoor patio, and inside, in the brand-new open space, we will have a two-story event space. The brewery itself is a fifteen-barrel brew house with a three-thousand-barrel production capacity, well under the fifteen-thousand-barrel production capacity that marks, that marks a microbrewery. As a microbrewery, we plan on having a community-first focus. As being part of the community, we first want to welcome everybody in the community. That means entire families. So along with brewing handcrafted beer and ciders, we will also have non-alcoholic sodas. Irwin and Church will not be serving food, but we will allow food to be eaten and delivered to the taproom, creating a symbiotic relationship with other downtown businesses, restaurants, and encouraging growth. We plan on having brewery tours so people can come by and experience the actual production of beer, learn about the history and what makes individual beers unique from different areas. We plan on being a part of events and festivals currently being held by downtown Cartersville and being part of new ones. What is good for downtown Cartersville is good for Irwin and Church, so it's vital for us to work hand-in-hand with the city government, local businesses, and the community as we move forward. Some of these benefits the city that Irwin and Church can bring are creating a landmark destination that not only attracts people from out of the area, but encourages other business growth within the community. We also have a one-of-a-kind, two-story event space located directly in the heart of downtown Cartersville. Possibly most importantly, we will create two new sources of revenue for Cartersville in the form of rent from the building and malt beverage taxes. And then lastly, we will be fronting the cost to renovate this beautiful building. To tell you a little bit more about that, I'd like to introduce Michael Holder.
Hello, my name is Michael Holder, and thank you for having us up here, letting us present our, our dreams. I'll be presenting on our design and rehabilitation and construction plans. I'll cover a broad scope of rehabbing Nineteen Irwin Street, and the design portion will cover our vision for our brewery, to include our hours of operation, our signage, outdoor spaces, and event spaces. Nineteen Irwin Street is a beautiful historic building that needs some work. We plan to completely rehab this building by adding a complete state-of-the-art fire suppression system, bolstering its structure to support its new use, upgrading all the mechanical, plumbing, electrical, heat and air, adding all-new ADA-prayed bathrooms on all floors, bringing Nineteen Irwin Street up to ADA standards to include a one-story elevator that will carry you from Irwin Street level to the top floor.
Michael, if you don't mind, I know that, I'd like for everybody in the room to be able to see that.
Yes.
If you can turn those easels, actually, if you just kind of, sorry, I'm going to be a diva a little bit. If you can just kind of hold that up and show council so we can take a peek, and then turn that easel so that everybody in the crowd-
I'm saying it.
Walk around, yeah, it's more like between rounds in a boxing match.
Right.
Perfect. There you go. Thank you. And then, except if you don't mind turning those easels so that everybody in the group can see it. Sorry to ruin your flow there.
Oh, it's all right. Thank you very much. I hope you like them. They, we think it's a beautiful concept. And I was talking about it, we wanted to add an elevator to take you from Irwin Street level up to the top floor. We plan to breathe new life into this historic building, and when we're finished with this hundred-year-old building, we're ready to serve Cartersville for the next hundred years. We've selected an architect, and he's the one who did our initial designs. This is, this is very similar to what we'd like it to look like or potentially look like. Our design will take, take advantage of many of the key fixtures of this building, to include its twelve-foot-high ceilings on the interior, its interior brick structure, its historic feel, old windows, the way it overlooks the downtown district, and the location to food, of course. We wanted it to feel like the grand hall that it was. Our design will utilize brick-on-brick finishes with accents of wood and steel, transforming the historic fire bay into our tasting room, opening the walls between the old fire bay and the new fire bay, as you can see in one of the photos. We'll have a deck that will be partially into the brewery to give you that in-brewery feel while you're in our establishment enjoying a pint. We're to plan on adding an outdoor space in front of the far-left two fire bays to have people, to invite people from downtown in, have a pint, have a nice place to sit outside and enjoy the weather. To include, we'll also be taking the old historic side of the building and doing two-story event space and taproom overflow. Irwin Street would be a overflow for the taproom and a corporate event space of that nature. It'll have its own private bath, its own bar area, and then it'll have elevator access to the top floor, which we want to make strictly an event space for weddings, larger events, which will have benefits of having a fire, having an elevator access, its own bathrooms, while preserving the old fire, fireman's ready room. We'd like to turn that into like a guest prep room, bride's ready room. There's a room directly adjacent that we want to turn into a catering warming kitchen, not to prepare food, but just to keep food service ready, storage for tables when it's not in use. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about our signage. On our renderings, we have shown pretty much what we would like our signage to look like. We want it to be clean and elegant, visible and not obnoxious, inviting. The back of the building, we call the front. We want to, we want to show our building to the downtown and have people come from the downtown in. As far as Irwin Streets, we plan on putting a small signage. It's actually not going to be our main entrance. Our main entrance will be located directly on the side of Irwin Street as you go in between the new fire bay and Irwin Street. No, there's going to be no lights, just, there's going to be no, it's not going to be backlit or any, of anything. It'll have its own drop lighting of signs. Our hours of operation plan is Monday through Thursday to be open three to ten, Fridays and Saturdays, one to midnight, Sundays, one to eight, and any time the downtown is having an event. We understand how much this building means to the city and its citizens, and we plan to take care of it and hope that you guys will let us come in and get to work. Thank you for letting me come up here and speak, let our teams, if you have any questions for us that I can answer or my team can answer, we can take them down.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for any of these gentlemen regarding the presentation?
Thank you very much.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. So, are you putting signs on Irwin Street? Are you going to use that entrance at all?
That is going to be, we're strictly using that as an event entrance. The main entrance will be, like I said, on the side of the building, and that will be more of an event space. And I say taproom overflow, if there's a need to open that space to go up, there'll be stairs on the inside as long as, and the outside as well. But for the most part, everybody's going to be coming in the side of the building, or the, or the new front, the back, through the brewery.
That's what you're proposing?
Yes, that's what we're proposing. That's what we're proposing.
All right. Other questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. I, the next item is, what we're considering tonight is the, an agreement to everybody to do their due diligence on, on the property. But before that, again, I'll recognize Kevin Labella, who's in charge of Sam Jones. And I know that there may have been a member of the church that would may want to say something, and so we'll give you all an opportunity to speak. So thank you for being here tonight. Again, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name's Steve Landrum. I'm a member of Sam Jones United Methodist Church. Kevin yielded to me first tonight. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for the city and what you guys do. Thank you for your service, and thank you for the work that you do here. And I want to say also to our guests, thank you for wanting to invest in our community. We, we love people to invest in this community, so thank you very much. I, I come tonight as a member. First of all, as a disclosure, this is not a confession because my pastor's in the room, but a disclosure, I, I like an occasional beer. However, I'm one of the lucky ones, because I'm one of the guys that can walk away from it. Alcohol has never had a, a hook in my heart. And as a church member, and as somebody who served the church for nineteen years, I've seen countless friends, family members, that have struggled, struggled with this issue. And we offer, and I say this because we're a historic church. We're an historic location that has served this community for a hundred and over a hundred and fifty years, as you well know. And sanctuary by its definition is a safe place. And we take that so seriously about this, about this topic of alcohol, is that it's not only written in our constitution, our book of dissonance, the warnings of it, but in communion, each month, we don't serve wine, we serve grape juice, because it's such a stumbling block to so many people that's seeking a safe place. And I say all this because it's not that we don't want you in a community, but this building happens to be right across the street from this safe sanctuary, this safe place that we offer to this community. And as we, as, as we planned and have sat in committee meetings at our church over the years, we've made a conscious decision to be a part of this community, to be downtown, to be a positive influence on this community. We've made that conscious decision, and I ask you to protect that. And you have with ordinances that protect the distances between drinking establishments and churches. We, we, we might be able to check off a box tonight that, that door-to-door, or whatever that distance is, okay, we can check a box, but the building is still across the street from an historic church. And just today, we had the, we had the National Day of Prayer. We've hosted it several years, right across the street. Just last month, we had the live nativity scene. You guys opened in prayer tonight, and I appreciate that, in the name of Jesus Christ. And we had a live nativity scene directly across the street from this proposed location portraying what Jesus did on Good Friday. At Christmas, we have a live, a live nativity scene. I said, I said passion scene on, on Good Friday, but we have a live nativity scene at Christmas portraying the same thing. We have countless weddings going up the steps of our church here, directly across the street from this proposed establishment. And I say all these things because it's not that we don't want new, new, new investment in this community, but I ask these things, is it the right fit? Is it the wise thing to do, right across the street from an historic church that has served this community for so long, that we try to offer a safe sanctuary to so many people who are trying to find a place to run from this addiction that they may have? So I just ask these things for you to consider, please. I represent, again, the laity of the church, and I appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think most of you know me. I'm Kevin Labella. I'm the senior pastor at Sam Jones Church, and I also want to say thank you. Thank you for keeping us informed in this and considering our, our feelings and our opinion in this. Needless to say, in church society, Sam Jones had a lot of different opinions about this, but I did want to come and share with you some of the concerns that I've heard from some of our parishioners who are very, have, have issues. One, Steve mentioned briefly, and that's the distance away from the church. We've read different, we've read some state rules, or some county rules, some city rules, but it's very close. The, from front door to front door, it's less than a hundred feet. And by any, any standard, I've seen that's too close. And I don't, I don't know. It's up to you guys to, to decide that. But I just, I would just hope that any in agreement that you enter into would consider several things. Consider the fact that when we open our doors there, where it's right across off Church Street there, and about signage, and we would ask that, any signage, we go on either side or on the back, and not just directly when we open, open the door. The other thing that I've got a lot of comments about with weddings and noise, you know, on Saturday night, Friday night, when the weddings come, it's already a bit of a struggle, and that's fine. We understand with festivals and all that are going downtown, but when the brides, you know, are having their sacred wedding, and the music's coming through, and to have a venue that close, and understand there's plans to maybe have some views that could on the backside there, I would hope that some of that would be taken into consideration as you write the agreement. So I'm, I'm glad, Steve, I'm glad you guys are coming, you know, and it's exciting to have new businesses in town. In fact, do y'all know about beer fasts? Yeah? Yeah? The ancient monks used to have beer fasts, but during Lent, they wouldn't eat any food except drink craft beer. So something, maybe something could occur. I don't know. But anyways, it's, you know, I wish everybody well. We want, number one thing, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to make Cartersville a wonderful place to do business, to live, and to serve and to worship. And so, again, I appreciate all of you and your concern and your willingness to hear us out.
Pastor, thank you. I did want to make, you know, a comment, because as part of this process, you know, when we had first gotten the RFP and wanted to at least explore it, City Manager Tamara and I both, you know, we sat down with you and got some good feedback, met with your board of trustees, and tried to share with you these gentlemen's vision. We did talk about the fact, you know, that, that there wasn't going to be any dedicated parkings that wouldn't affect the parking at the church. You heard the operational hours to where it wouldn't really be impacting Sunday services. We did talk about signage and making sure that there wasn't any beer signage that faced the church, and then, of course, the, the front door, what they're going to be using as the front door, make sure that meets whatever requirements there are for distances from that. So I just want to thank you for giving us a forum to try to, to, to get the feedback from you on the front end, and also to have you kind of work with us on making sure that, that things go the way that, that they need to. And I think these gentlemen have, from the beginning of the process, have shown a desire to be good neighbors, and I, I have every confidence that perhaps during the due diligence period, that there'll be some meetings to make sure that everybody's on the right page. It could really be a win-win for everybody.
So we ask.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm a little bit shorter. Hi, I'm Megan Humphries, and I'm on Douglas Street in Ward One. I live and work in Cartersville, and I got really excited when I saw the brewery ordinance. I'm not sure how many months ago that was, and excited to see this business coming into downtown. This is important for our downtown life and our economy. This is going to draw young people with disposable incomes to downtown. This is going to keep their money here instead of going down to Sweetwater, or to Marietta, or to the Rome City Brewing Company. This is going to keep their money here. This is going to keep their money here, and that's a really awesome thing. That's great for our economy. This is a positive business in our community that's going to help other businesses. And I just, I loved hearing the brewery tours. Breweries take on an educational approach. Anyone you meet who does home brewing or goes to breweries, they get excited because they can tell you about the process, they can talk about the monks and the beer fasts, and it takes an educational approach. This is not the type of establishment that you're going to draw people in who want a Coors Light. This is an establishment where people come in because they want to think about what they're consuming, think about what the process was. It's similar to wine tasting in that there is some thought that goes into it, so it's not just, you know, throwing back the beers. So this is absolutely a revenue-positive industry, and I can't believe that Cartersville is about to have that here, and that is so cool. And this is also a great way to preserve an older building. These are going to be respectful owners. I've known Michael and Mallory for, I'm not sure how many years at this point, but Mallory was one of my first Christian friends in theater, outside of high school, really. So they're good, Christian, church-going people. They understand being respectful to their neighbors, especially a church. And, you know, I'm a Christian too, and I'm excited about this being a location for Bible and brews. I think this is going to be a great place. And I know that there are some parishioners at Sam Jones who probably are excited about this too, so I just hope the city council takes that into consideration. There are young people who are really excited about this, and I'm one of them, and I'm willing to spend my dollars here, instead of Rome or Atlanta.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Appreciate all that community input. And again, Council, the item on the agenda is for an agreement to allow city shelter due diligence access agreement, so that they can access the building and see if this is something that they wish to continue to pursue. So if there's... Go right ahead.
So, I find it very interesting, and I know we're not voting on whether this comes or goes, or just whether we allow them to do their due diligence. But as I look at the Sunday paper, I went to a listening session last week for a recovery center who wants to come here to Bartow County, to Cartersville. And we know that the numbers of alcohol and drug addiction in our county are skyrocketing. I'll pull the statistics out for you, and I'm speaking for myself here. But I guess I'm sort of in a conflict right now, especially with this, because I personally have three friends right now who are in a rehab facility, and one I sent there because he was an alcoholic. So I don't really think I have to give justification all the time why I vote the way I do, but I want you to know that I don't vote, I don't go into it lightly, especially when I'm talking about this issue right now in my stage of life, where I'm at. And I think that's important to take into consideration, especially when I look at the faith community that I'm a part of, and take that into account. I think it's an important side to see when you look at Sam Jones, and invoke, you know, and look at that community and the faith community that we have. I try to be consistent in how I vote and how, what I believe and where I stand. So, and I think I just want to make sure that, you know, sometimes when people come and I see the great, yeah, the money that could go into building that, to redoing the building, but then I think about the relationships I have, and it's really hard to put the weight of the cost on that. So I think there's some things to consider as we move forward, when we think about, when we think about, when we have the front page of the paper, we talk about rehab, and then we're talking about, and the next article is about alcohol. To me, we just need to look at our, as our community, to say, okay, where are we going to? What direction are we going into, and what are going to be some priorities? You know, and I know that we talked about, a lot about tax money and tax funding, you know, perhaps we've already sold out our morality, and now we just negotiated a price. And I don't think, maybe that's something that we can consider, but just my thoughts, all right?
Well, I consider my morality intact, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of Council, but if there's other discussion.
I have one more comment to the brewery and the church. I kind of got the impression, the presentations, that the church is closed, period, from Monday until Sunday, but there are other activities going on during the week at the church, right?
Yeah, clearly so.
Yeah. Will that cause a problem somewhere between the activities on both sides of the street? This is something to think about later on, in your planning stages, is what I'm saying, is that the church is a living organism, and it's going to have activities going on while your operations go on also. And those things are going to have to be taken into consideration as things move forward. And that's some of the things that I'll be looking at.
Any other discussion? If there is none, then a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries forward to two. We do have another item to add to the agenda. Mr. Reinhardt, if you'll come forward and present that for us.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the city has received a notice of payment due from the DCA. This is in regards to the Habitat for Humanity grant that we received in 2011 from the DCA, in which they built, I believe it was seven houses and did some rehab on a rental unit. As a result, over the couple, past couple of years, Habitat for Humanity has not made annual payments as they've received money coming in from the mortgage payments. They completed an unapproved project using funds from the revolving loan fund, and they sold one of the Habitat houses and didn't remit those funds to the city also. As a result, the city, the DCA is now demanding a payment of $128,319.78 be returned to them immediately. If the city chooses not to do this, we will be not in compliance with the DCA. Also, failure to remit the funds could result in penalties to the city, as called for in the grant agreement, as well as jeopardizing future awards of CDVG grants for the city. I am requesting approval for the payment to be made to the DCA in the amount of $128,319.78 for the past two amounts from Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. I'll add a comment to this. Again, this is something the city has been working with Habitat for Humanity, the former board, the current board, that, and Habitat for Humanity, both national and state level, when this came to our attention, in trying to find out exactly what DCA wanted us to do in relation to making them whole. I'll, for lack of a better term, I'll apologize to Council if the work that I've done on this and worked with that I hadn't communicated that well with you all, if you felt it got dropped in your lap tonight, I'll consider that a personal failure, that I didn't communicate that with you, that this is something that I've been working on with Mr. Lovell and Ms. Brock for, again, really, and Mr. Reinhardt since, well, I think the better part of two years, to try to get some type of resolution and to figure out exactly what happened and why, and how to make it better. But at the end of the day, there is a plan in place that Mr. Lovell drafted with the new board of the Habitat for Humanity, that would have us, have them paying us back the money that they owe us after we pay DCA to make them whole and keep us in good standing with the Department of Community Affairs and keep any kind of grant opportunities intact.
And they have made some small payments over the last couple of months already.
They'll be paying us back in a five-year period, by making monthly payments. So that being said, this is for Council's consideration. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs to come before Council this evening? Mr. Wein, I'll give you the opportunity to talk about the event this weekend, if you care to. Special, you want anyone to charge you out?
That's right. Hi, my name is Kevin LaBella, I'm the volunteer forced into being the co-chair for the Taste of Cartersville this coming Saturday. It is going to be a beautiful day with maybe some slight showers, but we're so excited we don't care. So it's a charity event going on in the historic square from 12 o'clock to 6:00 PM. We've got a beer and wine tasting in front of Kahada. We have 150 different beers, 25 different wines. We've got a VIP tent with Low Country Boyle, Table 20 is doing a crazy spread. We have 15 local restaurants, and all of the downtown merchants who chose to participate, which is actually a lot, we've got 15 or 20, are going to bring out, weather permitting, supplies to sell. So we've got three live bands, a huge kids zone, inflatables, clowns, bubble, giant bubbles, chalk art. It's free, unless you want to do a beer and wine wristband, so we hope you guys come out and hang out with us. It will be great.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other business that needs to come before Council this evening? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.